I have previously provided each board member with the numbers and the charts and the graphs relating to the salary compaction issue in the District Attorney's Office that currently exists, and so I'm not going to go over that again. But I do want to talk briefly this morning about some of the issues that certainly affect my office. If the Board recalls, I was back here on September 13th of last year, asking the Board not to rescind Board Policy C-20 that dealt with compaction in the attorney groups in Riverside County because I was concerned at that point in time that compaction would ultimately be a problem in my office, and in fact, here we are today. And the Board promised me back in September that if that compaction problem did occur, that we could then address that issue in the future, and here I am. Obviously, the Board has already approved contractual agreements with all of the county employee unions, and that's wonderful to have labor peace, but certainly, that comes at a price, and we all appreciate and understand that. And of course, those contractual agreements include the Deputy DA's Association from my office. These contractual agreements increased the salaries and benefits for approximately 17,000 Riverside County employees at a cost of over $400 million over the next four years. I am here this morning to ask the Board to give these same benefits to my attorney managers, and I believe the proposal from the Executive Office is only a two-year package rather than the four years that is included in most of the contractual agreements the county has already approved. As far as my office is concerned, we're talking about approximately 25 people at an annual cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $300,000 a year. These are people who have dedicated their professional lives to serving the citizens and victims of this county. These are people who have been loyal, dedicated, and hard-working employees for 15, 20, or 25 years or more. And it's even more personal to me because when I was elected as the next District Attorney in June of 2010, I asked several of these individuals who had previously retired from the DA's office to come out of retirement and to come help and assist me right the ship in our legal justice system in this county. And so several of those people gave up their retirements that they were already collecting on and assisted me to their own detriment in helping me right the ship. We've now significantly accomplished that, and now is the time to treat them fairly and not penalize them for the sake of making a political statement. How soon we forget that only two, two-and-a-half to three years ago, what a chaotic situation our justice system was in. Hundreds of criminal cases were being dismissed. Civil cases were not getting heard in court for years. That's no longer the case, and certainly, I'd like to take credit for all of that, but that wouldn't be fair or right. What is fair and right is the fact that all of these people in my management team have been a big part and have been instrumental in fixing the problem that occurred for several years in the justice system in this county. For the past three years, this Board has cut my budget, and I understand law. The Economic Times dictated and demanded that. And commensurately, I have cut my budget, and one of the major ways that I've cut my budget to meet these financial requirements is by cutting a lot of my upper-management executive staff. I have at least 15 to 20 vacant executive positions right now that have cost savings of almost $2.5 million. But what that means is that now I have fewer managers, fewer executives doing the same job. And I read this Sunday in the Press Enterprise, the articles that dealt with this subject, and I'm sure the Board is well aware of them, and one of the issues that was raised by the Press Enterprise was why should we pay this salary increase if we're getting the same service? Well, we're not getting the same service. My supervisors in my department are working harder because there are fewer of them doing the same job, and it's not an easy one. The proof that the managing attorneys are deserving of a raise, again, is quite apparent and quite obvious. These are the people who are primarily responsible for the tremendous cost savings to this county, the taxpayers, and the court, resulting from the alleviation of the critical congestion that we faced for several years in our criminal courts, the elimination of the overwhelming backlog of pending criminal cases that no longer exists, and the correspondent threat to public safety caused by the dismissal of hundreds of criminal cases. Again, that problem and situation has been alleviated primarily due to the efforts of My request this morning is to address these salary compaction problems and issues. And again, this request is only for two years. I am aware that with respect to future managerial raises, that the Board and the Executive Office is looking into the possibility of basing management raises on an individual merit-based system. I'm all in favor of that. I'm not opposed to that at all. I don't think the Sheriff is as well, but certainly, he can speak for himself. The problem is the disparate and severe salary compaction that exists right now. That needs to be addressed immediately, and it's only going to become worse over the next couple of years. In previously approving the labor agreements that this Board approved, the Board took the position that it needed to approve these salary increases for union members in exchange for instituting the two-tier retirement system and in exchange for requiring county employees to pay their own EPMC, their share of the retirement contribution. That same reasoning and rationale applies to the county managers. They're in the same position. Matter of fact, even worse, the county managers were the first ones that were through. They were the first ones that had to start paying their EPMC, not only at a higher rate but at an earlier point in time. So again, the old saying, "What's good for the goose is good for the gander." That rationale still applies. The managers should not now be penalized or punished because they are unrepresented. They should not be made the proverbial sacrificial lamb at public expense. This situation, and I keep thinking about this, reminds me of a phrase my parents taught me many years ago, and that's a phrase that talked about being a penny wise but a pound foolish. How much money are we really saving and at what cost or what expense when we're penalizing the leaders of this county and of the DA's office? And one thing I want to make perfectly clear is that my request this morning doesn't cost the taxpayers or the county one additional dollar. I am willing to assume any additional expense in my currently approved budget. And so what I'm asking the Board to do is to be fair and just, something I was required to do during my years as a Superior Court Judge. As prosecutors, we spend our entire careers seeking justice and fairness, and this morning, I'm asking all of you now to be fair and just.
[laughter] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
I also echo the same sentiments as far as equity issues that District Attorney, my colleague, has raised with you, but I'm also going to underscore in my brief presentation to you this morning that also the issue dysfunction, particularly in 24/7 uniform services where we're on the front lines on emergency response and have legal and moral responsibility for command and control of those that not only pass an harm's way but inflict great harm on communities if it doesn't go unchecked. We're partly the checks and balances within that process. What I'd like to do is, forgive me a little bit, we do have the slides, so I'd like to have those things loaded up. First slide come up. As a District Attorney indicated, I also have been before you, and many of you have had discussions with me. This has been an ongoing problem, really, for the last several years. The merit-to-increase issue that has been put on the table, at least publicly, I also support along with the District Attorney. Not in the current circumstances, and I'll walk you through why, that that is not really an option at this point. We're already in deep trouble now and suffering from dysfunction internally because this has been allowed to go on way too long. It's also created a much larger gap to close because it has not been dealt with. In 2008, in the spring, some of you will remember, we did have merit increases, we had step increases that the Department Head could deal with, and in 2008, in that spring, I did exactly that. Rather than wholesale fixing everybody across the board or altering the rates of pay, I dealt with specific problems where one individual subordinate had subordinates that were making more money, we ended up fixing that, and so we fixed specific problems as opposed to making a wholesale sweep. Unfortunately, that has not been a tool that are back in call for a number of years due to some of the freezes that we've had on merit increases and so on, and since then, the union raises in the subordinate organizations in my organization have already eclipsed all those efforts on that. But I would be very much open to looking at that downrange because it certainly will come back up. Both the District Attorney and I are looking at not biting off the full commitment that you've made to the labor unions for that extended period of time, but fixing the accident problem right now, this minute that we're already in a hole on, at least through the summer of next year, which puts it on basically a two-year cycle. I'd like to draw your attention on the first slide very quickly, and again, to underscore what's already been said, we're talking about a very small minority. If you look at the larger portion of the pie chart there, you'll see that's represented by the Riverside Sheriff's Association, which are aligned uniform staff. The yellow indicates Leuna, which are aligned civilian staff. As you know, almost three-fourths of the Sheriff's Office is made up of uniformed employees, both in the correctional series and the sworn series, but we also have a significant cost savings by utilizing civilian employees in a variety of those areas. So those two unions, the yellow and the green area, reflect those on the very front lines that do the actual day-in, day-out arrests, dealing with prisoners in the jails and so on. You'll see also the blue area, and that's one of the myths that publicly has been out there, is that we don't need to be dealing with managers, we just need to focus on line staff. I'm going to come back to that because in the uniform services where you end up having command and control responsibilities, and me as the Sheriff, the buck stops, and those checks and balances as far as the ability of folks to end up not only utilizing force but dealing with constitutional rights and taking property away and so on are very high liability items. The blue area there for Limu, one of the unions you've already dealt with, also represents management. In fact, many of those include captains, sergeant, lieutenant, captain ranks. So you've already dealt effectively with very senior managers in the Sheriff's Office. The group we're talking about is that small red sliver of 35 that are unrepresented, non-tenured, non-civil service protected, so to speak. Purple area there, SEIU, as you know, I've got four different groups that work in my organization, as labor units, RSA, Leuna, as I mentioned, Limu, which includes management as I've underscored, and uniquely, the technical folks. 194 is the current count that I have of SEIU members. A little over half of those are actually supervisors. So my point to you, again, to underscore that, is you've already dealt with raises with managers. In fact, the bulk of the managers have already been dealt with. The ones we're dealing with here this morning are 11 out of the 35. The HR Director already a few weeks ago, as you know, this has been split out in a number of different sections. That 35 in the Sheriff's Department, right now, five of them already been dealt with a few weeks back that were done collectively by the HR Director. I'm dealing with 11 today, and we still have a number of unrepresented management that'll come back to you at a future time, some of which may be applicable for merit increases. Go to the next slide, and this becomes a little bit more of an illustrator of the specific problem the Sheriff's Office has as a uniform service. You'll see the line staff on the bottom of Leuna and RSA. You'll see the sergeants. The blue area there represents, and I'll give credit to this, Coys Bird and Larry Smith and I have talked, but in many departments, many law enforcement agencies, sergeants are not part of management. The Sheriff's Office here many years ago made a decision under the late, great Ben Clark to have sergeants be a part with lieutenants and captains and be part of management. So that whole blue area represents management, and it was done with malice aforethought, I think, at the time. At the time, when I was a young deputy, I didn't understand it. Coming up to the ranks, I do a lot more now. And that was the issue, if you remember, in 1980, when the Sheriff's Department actually had a strike. The only strike that had, and the line staff went out. Number of issues that drove that, but it gave the department the ability to still provide minimal public service because literally sergeants ended up handling calls and dealt with the issues on that. And the department would have been utterly crippled at that point if they had not been part of that, so that was a very good decision. The two areas I want to draw your attention to on that graph are the captains and 23 captains. There's actually 24 positions, one of which have been for salary savings leaving vacant, and the 11 executives. And as the District Attorney underscored, the Sheriff's Department changed when I took office in the fall of 2007, too. And some of you who were on the Board knew full well, there was an executive office position that I removed at the time. The sheriff preceded me, actually had four filled assistant sheriffs. We actually removed one of those, it was unnecessary, and due to budget issues, I actually reduced it even further. We've been running with essentially two assistant sheriffs on it. So it's actually been downsized, even though, as you know, for corrections and some of the other areas, or some of our contract communities and some of the other issues that we've had, we've actually expanded since 2007, particularly at the line level, without any expansion of the executive level. And then you'll notice on the SEIU that half of those are supervisors as well, that oversee civilian employees. But what I will underscore are the sergeants, and in almost all cases, lieutenants, and in every single case, captains and the executives oversee the entire organization of the Sheriff's Department. So it's not simply civilians overseeing civilians. The responsibility goes on up. The next slide, and I'm not going to tick through this, it's part of your Form 11, but for the public's education, I think it's important to understand what these folks do. The chief deputies pretty much are the levelers across the department and really the brain trust on how the department operates day-to-day. We have 24, if we fill every single one of them, captain positions and command stations and bureaus across 7,300 square miles, but there are multiple disciplines. And the thing that ties this whole thing together is that executive team that those groups of captains are lumped onto, and some of them are in specialized area jails, coroner, public administrator, some are in field operations. There's a variety of operations that they end up overseeing that are specialized areas, and every one of our areas, at one point or another, will impact the other areas. They end up being the critical function on dealing with not only promotions and transfers, but most critically, for the law enforcement community is accountability. So chief deputies in our organization, that rank right above captains, are in fact those that end up not only overseeing all personnel investigations, in which we go through hundreds and hundreds, on holding our folks accountable, and then those that merit either dismariation or in some cases, criminal cases, they're the ones that make those decisions on taking somebody out, somebody that end up being pursued in what type of discipline, and then the follow-on with where those disciplines go, the SCLE hearings that are required by law, the arbitrations that follow on those issues. So I won't go through all those bullet items in the interest of time, and they already are in your Form 11, but you need to understand they are a critical function, not something that any agency can cast away. And as I've explained to you, many police departments that we work side-by-side with, the next biggest department in this county is Riverside Police Department, which is about one-ninth or one-tenth the size. For the equivalent of that agency, they utilize three people for that agency that is one-tenth the size of the Sheriff's Office. So if we were staffed the same as the local city police department, I would end up having 25 or 30 executives. So I think you can take a great deal of pride in the fact that we run very lean, and in fact, you see that day-in and day-out in our contract city business because we actually leverage very few people versus what many of the agencies. And that's not to say any disparaging remarks about the allied agencies, but the point is to us, we run a very, very lean organization, but it still takes those critical players. The next chart focuses even more on where the problem, the dysfunction that I mentioned occurs with the Sheriff's Office. The executives in the Sheriff's Department, like any law enforcement agency, are drawn from the captain rank. Those ranks are absolutely critical. The current compaction issue is really almost the reverse of compaction now because, as you know, the disparity between senior and subordinate have been getting smaller and smaller as unions. And Limu, if you recall, last year, that includes those captains, actually got 4% worth of raises last year when the rest of the folks above them were captive. So they got 2% a year ago in July, they got another 2% in January. I warned you back in November that this was becoming a critical issue because it was becoming a level playing field, and I told you in January, with that next raise that Limu was going to take, this last January, our senior executive staff were going to be making less, and you'll see that graphically depicted a little bit, they were going to be making less than the captains they oversaw. And then, of course, with the latest labor contracts that were negotiated by the spring, that is now worsening, or we're now at 16% and 17% below. If you look at that graph, I draw people from those captain ranks. There is nobody, unless they're not of right mind, going to take a 16% or 17% cut for more authority and responsibility and lose their civil service protection that they have. Everybody up through Limu, all the labor units, have civil service protection. Those 11 executives do not have civil service protection. And I'll underscore the District Attorney's remarks, the same issues that we see publicly about tenure, the issues in schools on people that get tenured and you can't deal with it. It is critical that we end up having those folks at will. It is critical that we have those folks in the command and control of our organization and to end up turning that upside down where I have no ability, one, to force people out because the pay is going to end up being below what their subordinates are, but worse yet, filling the vacancy is nearly impossible. So you create a monstrous problem for the uniform services in the Sheriff's Department. You'll see the staff ratios off to the side, and you'll see the chief deputy span ratio. Each one of them has the equivalent of what Sergio Diaz does over at Riverside Police Department, and that's the largest agency, so you can imagine how that dwarfs the other agencies that we're working side-by-side on. So it's not that they don't have a lot to do, they have tremendous spans of control. If you go to the next graph, the next two graphs will graphically depict, and then I'll pause and take your questions on it. You'll see the history of what I just talked about graphically depicted. This shows all the way back to July of 2010, the gap between, and that blue line represents what the next subordinate level, captain level, is. You can see how that drifted into January of 2011, July of 2011, after the 2% raise that was on the old Limu contract, and then you can see graphically what happened when the employee pickup costs hit, remember 4% in December and the other 5%? So they are now picking up the full freight on that, and the unions now have had that spread out with offset that you provided during your negotiations, and you can see currently where we're at now. This is the sworn chief deputy versus the sworn captain, so you keep it apples to apples. And the next slide, the last slide, shows the same thing for the correctional deputy series, where the correctional chief deputy is compared not to a sworn captain, but for the same one in that career field, a correctional captain. You can see that it's pretty extreme at this point. And so in closing, my remarks echo the District Attorney's. Equity is a big issue, certainly, but also the issue of causing great dysfunction to the organization and our inability to control it if we don't have people in those positions, and the ability to replicate that leadership when we need to, when we end up having vacancies created by either somebody suddenly resigning or somebody saying, "You know, I'm going to go off into retired life. I cannot promote captains if they're going to end up taking a pay cut to come and help run the agency." So with that, I will close, and I don't know if we need to answer the other questions on that. It's a crisis for our agencies, just like the District Attorney. I'll underscore that I'll deal with this in my budget. The amount of money is not a lot, but the criticality is tremendous for us. And so we both are side-by-side beseeching you, this has to get fixed, and we cannot run our organizations.
Thank you both for your presentations. Supervisor, question?
No, I appreciate your presentation, and I know you've done a lot on a lot of different levels to try to deal with the fiscal constraints we have today, and a lot of this is intensified by the pension changes, and we aren't here today by virtue of any short-term decisions. There's been a long lead-up that's led us down this path to where we're now, you know, painted ourselves in the corners, so to speak. And it's going to take, it's going to take quite a while for us to change our way of doing things so that we don't have this automatic push-up from below and this squeezes people and creates all these inequities. And hopefully, we have, we have, forming a plan to deal with this, and I know Mr. Orr and he's been here today, we'll talk a little bit more about that, and Ms. Oliver, Eric can talk about it. But what I'd like to throw out to you in the future, would we be better served with having some combination of approach to overall compensation increases of saying, "Well, first, what do you think we need for your management?" Talking to all the departments, yours particularly, but all the departments, and then saying, "Look, we've got so much money that we're going to assign for compensation increases, and we want to hear from you how it should be divvied up." And so we get the cart a-hint of the horse here, rather than being pushed up here. And I understand why all that's taking place. It's a combination of, as I said, things that have happened over a long period of time now. So I appreciate your adjusting, really, adroitly to a lot of the pressures that you're under and still getting out the workload, still achieving a good result here in the county on the public safety out in the street. And maybe, I mean, I use different barometers to measure things, but one of the ones I use to go out to a public meeting, and what I hear about what you're doing is all real high marks that even with your stretched resources, you're still getting on top of issues and you're still preventing a lot of things from occurring. So, and a lot of that's because of your top people in your department. You have a high caliber of staff. We want to keep that here in the county, and your department's really set the leadership tone for that. So we don't want to damage that, and we're going to have to watch very closely over the next couple of years that we can retain and attract the kind of high caliber people in yours and in the other county departments. So thanks for addressing this. Mr. DA, is it easier to argue over here than it is over in court? Would you, as a judge, have shut you down today?
No, there's only five of you versus 12 in the jury box.
Thank you, Supervisor, for those comments, and you've heard me speak before, but one of the things that we've seen in the department work quite handily in face of the challenges of early retirements, remember, a few years ago, and you remember me coming and being concerned about the loss, particularly in some of those areas, when you lose experience, it takes you many, many years, serves the public, particularly in emergency operations. For the Department Head, it becomes a little bit, quite a bit scary, and particularly when that goes through all the different ranks in the organization, and quite literally, we have a very young department, and we've lost a lot of experience over the last three or four years. That's one of the downsides, I've told you, about 3% and 50. And then when we had some of the fiscal takeaways that were necessitated by the Board, and we all understood that, it pushed a lot of those folks out that would not have gone in fast. And if you remember, we were filling a lot of positions massive overtime because we're running 12-hour shifts, so it was not lost on any department leaders, and we had very high liability issues going because you had a lot of new people leading new people, leading new people all the way down echelon by echelon. And so that underscores my interest in making sure that we don't have any further damage to the organization. We got great people, but it still takes you a lot of time moving through those chairs in law enforcement, deputy detective, working as a sergeant, successful lieutenant, running as a captain command and a couple of different commands before we cool people up. And anything that we can do to keep them from going out before they really need to really helps the citizens of Riverside County. So thank you.
It could really help us to get your best advice here for our plan going forward, for the way to approach compensation over a several-year period. We're trying to project our revenue streams, and things are going to be real tight in the next couple of years, but so if either we could start from looking at the total organization, the total amount of money that we can spare, or a combination of that and looking and seeing what top managers of money that we can spare, or a combination of that and looking and seeing what top managers, how we need to increase, or increase top management right through to those that are doing the, doing the work out in the field. That would be very helpful, this board.
And I can't speak for the DA, but knowing pretty well and working side-by-side, I think you can both count on us as a board in supporting that effort.
Supervisor Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you've made a compelling case in why we should support this proposal, and I support it. But I think Supervisor Busta made a very good point. And in the future, once you get to suggest that these, anyway, those should be based on merit, and you could have some folks there that aren't doing the job, that can and should be making less than maybe a captain, you know, but that's the way you help move them out. So I think in the future, after the proposal, this should be based on merit, brought back, subject to the approval of the board, you bring back your recommendations based on merit. Somebody may get a raise, somebody may not, somebody may get a smaller one, somebody a larger one, based on their performance. And I think that's the way to go. And I think it's important we do this because you've got to feed the horse that pulls the wagon. It's an old saying that's true here.
[inaudible] Does there any comments, Mr. Chairman, of approval of this proposal unless there's, at this time? Call second Supervisor Ashley's motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve items 3.26 and 3.29.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got speakers on my end.
You're correct. Thank you for that reminder.
You can just approve mine then.
Yeah, you will.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Santana, Alvaro Santana.
I do imagine the reaction on faces of the supervisors when they heard you were raised from Sheriff Sniff and District Attorney, certainly. It is understandable. The obligation of the sheriff and the district attorney is to defend their departments. The unions are supposed to protect their members and the board of supervisors, the people of the county. I do agree with Sheriff Sniff and District Attorney, certainly, that it is a nonsense and unjust that non-unified senior staff and managers make less money than unified subordinates. It is a situation that creates frictions and affects the smooth function of any governmental department or any private businesses. But on the other side of the coin, I also understand that it is very startling to talk about raising when the county is struggling financially and employees have been left. At this point, I wouldn't like to be in the shoes of any of my dear supervisors. We are facing a conflict between money and justice in what could be classified as a very complicated and difficult issue in times of economic stress. This is why I am respectfully proposing to this board to do justice today, or in case, give time, a reasonable time for a decision, to take a decision regarding this very complex strife, and call for a workshop where the people of the county have the opportunity to express their opinions in a much broader scenario. Or, as an alternative, I'm going to finish, give some time to the conflict parties to procure a solution. One second. But if no solution is found, then we force you, the supervisor, to do what you will do, which is to do the best for the interests of the people of the county.
And the last person I'm letting go in beyond three minutes today, even though it was just 10 seconds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. I just, did you wish to speak further, Supervisor Ashley?
Do one.
You know, I came into this board meeting today believing in my own mind and talking to staff, administrative staff, this morning about this issue. I know that they're going to bring something back in January, or excuse me, September, to talk about on a broader scale, as was mentioned, a more, a program that deals with merit. And I actually wanted to do the right political thing, I guess is the way, to bring this back and look at the whole picture. But in the end, I think you both made compelling arguments. I know what both of you do, I know what your agencies do. You're putting murderers away and bad people. You're arresting them. And you're expecting your top management to be experienced enough to supervise and oversee the operation so that those that are being arrested and apprehended are done so in a professional way, under a lot of scrutiny today. And so I think with that, I'm not going to do the political thing that I supposedly write today and not support this. I'm going to support it because I have a tremendous amount of faith in both of your agencies and your leaders there to make the right step, and they should be compensated accordingly. So with that, I'll go with the motion unless there are any further comments. Motion is unanimous.